Welcome, everyone. We're going to call the committee poll meeting to order at 1:00 PM Friday, February the 28th, 2024. Before I go to the approval of the agenda, I'd just like to take a moment to address the events happening in Sicamous this past weekend, and just want to relay that council is saddened by the tragedy of Saturday's shooting. The Southeast Major Crime Unit report that the shooting was an isolated targeted incident, and there is no ongoing risk to the public. You may notice an increase in police presence in the community as the major crime unit investigates this incident. Investigations like this, these informations and tips from the public are crucial, so please call 1-877-8477 if you have any information to share. We never expected something like this could happen in our community. Sadly, it seems that we hear about it happening somewhere every day. The District of Sicamous works very closely with the Sicamous RCMP, the detachment here, and Sergeant Marie McNeil gives us regular updates. These updates are open to the public, and we will continue this line of communication. So I just wanted that to share that with you before I started today's meeting and let you know that as a community where we will stick together and we will get through this. Okay, I want to approve the agenda recommendation that the RW Bruin Bridge Replacement be added as a late item, and that the Committee of Poll Meeting Agenda be Agenda for Friday 20, for February 28th, 2024 be approved as amended. Could I get a mover? Counselor Rich, Counselor Evans, is there any discussion? Counselor Bailey?
I have a discussion on when these late items come up, and especially on issues such as the Broome Bridge, like major stuff that we're working on, I'd really prefer them not to be verbal updates, and something written down that we can share is fine to go forward with that today, but I just want to have that as my opinion on the matter. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Yeah, I would support that. I just feel like we need more time on a lot of these considerations that are really big, so.
Yeah, and thank you. This just came to a meeting yesterday, and as Mayor and Counsel, we have been writing once a month to MOTI regarding the bridge. So I'm in favor if something comes in that is related to the bridge, that we get it out to council and community as soon as possible. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's just for information, not for a decision or vote, and yeah, it's good to have any update.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Rich?
Yeah, through the chair. I just think these kind of things too, we needed a little bit of time to chew on them. And I would like, like I'm, I'm not big on late items. I like to have some time to think. So that's just me personally.
Yep, okay, thank you. It's just a verbal update. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the agenda is approved as amended. Recommendation that the amendments of the Committee of Poll Meeting held on February 14th, 2024 be adopted. Could I get a mover? Counselor McCabe, Counselor Rich, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're going to start with the District of Sicamous Code of Arms revisit, so.
Through the chair, just this, this motion was already first and seconded, so it's just awaiting a vote. It had been postponed, and there's an update from our bylaw enforcement officer about that process.
Just a point of clarification. So if this is a motion to direct staff proceed, is that correct?
Yeah.
My name is Mayor.
Okay, yep, yeah, go ahead, John.
I added this as a late item to my original proposal for the uniforms, and after some research into it, I've discovered there's actually a substantial cost associated with doing this, as well as a time commitment. So we'd be looking at about a year and a half to two years for it to be finalized and actually registered, and at approximately $5,000, and that could, of course, go up. So before I did any further research or investigation, I just wanted to bring that to council's attention and ask for their clarification whether I should move forward.
Thank you, John. Counsel, Counsel Rich?
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you, John, for always being here with us. So what does a code of arms do for us? And I know that's like a super simple, basic thing, but does that identify you different? Does it identify our town? Is it something we're going to hold for 100 years? And I don't know this, so I'm just honestly, it's a super layman's, but for the investment, what do we get out of it? And is it like, is it important to our community that we're identified?
Through the chair, Counsel Rich. It's a, it's a one-time thing. Once it's registered, it is, it is a permanent recognized emblem of the District of Sicamous, and it's what some other municipalities have done and are continuing to do, just as, so that they're sort of recognized at the federal level, and it becomes a recognized emblem for use within the district, for communicating on our documents, et cetera. The same as a corporate logo, the Sicamous Live More. It's the same idea, only it's a more recognized.
Thank you. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, my thoughts on that are that it, you know, the code of arms is so government-y sort of thing, and we're a small resort town, and, and that's our niche in the world is we're a small resort town. And, you know, Sicamous Live More, kind of laid back, that kind of cottage feel. I think a code of arms would take away from that myself personally.
Counselor Bailey?
No, I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea. I'm glad that you looked into it, because I thought was my initial, like anything this official usually does take some time, but, I mean, it is, it is something that I could see being of value, just to, I think, recognize. It would have to be something collaborative, though. Like, I think when we get into this, it would be something that we'd have to talk to a lot of stakeholders about. But if we can find a grant around that, then I don't think it's a bad thing to actually investigate further. Sure.
Anyone else? Counselor Evans?
Um, I think this is something that we could maybe table for a year and see how things go with finances over the next while. And I'm not opposed to researching further, because I think it's kind of cool, but for right now, the cost and the staff time that it would take, I don't think it's a good idea right now, but maybe in a year. Yeah.
Counselor Beach?
Through the chair, yeah. I also think that this, this would be better. We've got some big things coming down in the next little while. I would like to revisit it, because and see where we are in a year or two even. But anyways, I like it.
Thanks, Counsel Beach. Counsel Bailey?
I just, I guess more a question for John.
Go ahead.
In terms of what do you think the time commitment on your end would be to do this? Like, is it, is it a lot, or is it just a little, or it's something that you kind of go back to and process bit by bit as time goes on?
Through the chair, Counsel Bailey. I don't see it taking very much of my time, but it's the commitment of the that is paramount with this, in order to even start the process. If you engage with a federal artist, there's fees associated with it, beginning the process.
Thank you.
Hey, there is a recommend, there is a recommendation here that staff be directed to formally request a grant of emblems from the Canadian Heraldic Authority on behalf of the District of Sicamous. Could I get a mover on that? Counsel Rich, seconded by Counsel Bailey. I guess at this point, we need to determine whether we want to move forward with this or defeat it, and look at it next year or thereafter. So I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed?
For Gord, I've voted enough.
I can't.
With him, if we don't see him, he's voting in favor.
He's voting in favor.
Okay.
Sorry, opposed? Four and three.
Okay.
Opposed is Evans, Beach, Anderson. Yeah. No, Gord's in favor.
In favor, sorry, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to get, move on to updates. The Shushua Healing Center groundbreaking ceremony. Kelly, did you want to give us an update, please?
Yep, this will be really brief. I'm just reminding council that we've scheduled a groundbreaking ceremony for March the 11th. I'll let Sarah speak a little bit more to it. She's been helping coordinate it. But we will be putting out a post here sooner than later. There will be equipment and fencing starting to go up a little bit before the 11th, so people will be coming onto the site and start getting ready for the construction of the healing center the week of March 11th. But the groundbreaking ceremony we're having on the morning of March 11th. You want to say a few more details on that?
Yeah, through the chair. So I've been in communication with Splatgene, and we are going to have Lorraine Felix come to do a ceremony. And so I'll be connecting with her about, you know, what that will look like. All the council is, has committed to attend, and there's arrangements for the two councils to have lunch together after. As I know, you guys have not got together since the new council was elected. I, I'm also, staff is working on a news release with Splatgene and our funding partners, the Government of Canada and Province of British Columbia, and that'll go out to let the public know. We'll send out invites, so March 11th, likely 11:00 AM, but we'll firm up that time.
Excellent, thank you. Any comments from council? Go ahead, Kelly.
I just wanted to further add that I know everybody saw some trees go down last week. But some good news from that is that we were able to, some of the trees that came down got loaded up into a District of Sicamous truck, and, and we drove them out to Enderby over to Splatzen, and they're going to do some artwork with, with it.
Awesome.
They were very pleased, were they not, Daryl?
Yeah.
Excellent, that's really good news. Thank you. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, just through the chair, thanks. Thank you very much, staff, for doing that. I know they did express some interest about some bar, or some trees, and, yeah, so thanks for taking the time to do that. Goes well for nature.
Absolutely. Counsel Bailey?
I might have a conflict the March 11th, but I'm going to try to shift that around, but I just want to be upfront with that. There is something on that tee that I can't move, but I will attempt to.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, let's move on. Bruin Bridge Replacement, late item, Kelly, just a update, please?
Yep, once again, this will be really brief. Daryl and I had a phone call yesterday with the project manager Jennifer Stites and Blair Riley, I believe, is last name is. So they just were giving an update. So the, the prequalifications for the contractor has closed. They got quite a good response, so they were quite happy. I think there was up to seven organizations that were prequalified. The tender will be going out very soon. They said no later than the end of March. They just are waiting on a few other things they have to button up before issuing out that tender, and then all those contractors that have been prequalified will be able to bid on the tender. The tender will be open for approximately six weeks. They're hopeful that construction could start in July or August of this upcoming year, and they're anticipating a three-year construction window, just in terms of timing. So when they have some more information, they, I said it would be great if you could come to council. So they're just, they need to go through their approval process as well in terms of, before they're allowed to come in and issue stuff. But I got confirmation that I was able to share that with council, so I thought it was relevant. I also asked about the pedestrian portion on the bridge and the connectivity to the rail trail, because I know there was some discussions about that, and I haven't heard anything from MOTI previously about that. They were all waiting, and they're still waiting to have a, have a meeting with Splatzen. But right now, what their, their solution is, is in their current design, they have, the connection will be via Congreve Road. So that's what they're planning. Originally, I think they wanted something a little bit more back and forth, less of a grade, but recognizing there's some sensitivities there, they're trying to minimize that. So that's what they have within the design right now. I haven't seen the design. It was just a quick question. And that's what they, that's where they're at right now. That's the update.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Beach?
Yeah, through the chair. Looking at the, the design, which we, we have access to now, the pedestrian walkway that they've created on the new bridge design, it does open onto Old Spall Road, and I think that was, it does open. It looks like it opens, but it's just like if we use our imagination. So I think that would be nice to have clarification on how that, how that pedestrian and cycle part opens onto Old Spall. And I, and I do know that the Phil McIntyre Paul was curious about how that was going to play out as well. It would be nice to engage MOTI on that.
Yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
And just further to that, she had met, they had mentioned that it would go onto Old Spall Road and then connect to Congreve, and that Old Spall would be closed.
Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to really have all this down in renderings and a report, and them coming to hear and explaining all this, because we've had so, just in the time I've been on council, this was supposed to start in 2023. I know we're inching towards it, but there's been, this thing's been a moving target for quite a while in terms of the bridge construction. I'm glad that it's getting to tender, but we were also told emphatically last year that construction was going to start in 2023. Now we're in 2024, we're talking about maybe July or August. You know, it's, it's been a problem to kind of, to nail this down. So with the connectivity, I mean, it's really important part for me. It, it has to be in writing, it has to be in a, in a, in a rendering, and then it has to be agreed to. Because I, it, there's, there's a couple of things in there that are the what-if columns, right? What if the, the Splatzen needs to be consulted, you know, you know, consulted, and that's fine, too. That means it's not done. That means it's not, it's not decided. There's a lot of what-ifs again in this project. So that's, that's why I asked previously, just when we get these updates, if, if we can kind of have them down in writing, we can follow along with what we were said at certain times. I'm not suggesting that it's staff getting it inaccurate. It's, it's what we're being told from MOTI that then does kind of shift as we go along, and this has happened quite often, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, and I have one more comment, and it's not, not to Ian Bailey's comment, but it's more something I forgot to mention before as well, that in conjunction with the MOTI RFP, the District of Sicamous will also be doing an RFP for the parking replacement. So that's part of the deal, is that MOTI, they are giving us funds towards securing land for a five-year period for the replacement of the parking in, yeah.
Under the bridge, yeah.
The public beach parking. I know it was mentioned a while ago, and it was parked because it was, the timing didn't work out. There's no point putting out that when they don't know when they're starting, because then the five-year clock starts. So there will, we have a draft one, so MOTI doesn't, we're the middle person on this RFP, because we know the area. So they're trying to do all the work behind the scenes, even though we have a draft RFP, which we need to tweak and simplify a little bit, because it's quite big, and we want something very simple, but, so that will be on our list of things to do, and we'll, it will be forthcoming. So just so everybody's aware.
For sure, and that's the 37 truck and trailer spaces. I think it was 37 and some odd car spaces.
Yes, to set the beach. But we're permanently losing the truck and trailer. However, we're temporarily using, losing the beach park parking.
Yeah.
The combination of both, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Chair, I think you actually clarified that, Kelly, or Madam Mayor? But I just wanted to clarify, the parking we're talking about is, is actually the beach park. This has nothing to do with parking on the other side of the bridge and that, that stuff. This is about the parking that we use every day to get, when I go down to the beach with my kid at school.
Yeah, right underneath the bridge there. Okay, yes.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Counsel Bailey?
Yeah, just a question on that, and thanks for bringing that up, Kelly. That would be, we're going to lose that parking for the entire duration of the construction, or to be determined?
To be determined.
Right.
To be determined. Yes, and they will also be using where that houseboat is, because that's all MOTI area. That's why we haven't done anything with where that houseboat is. They will be using that as a staging area as well.
That was my next question, so thanks for answering that. And maybe just one more. There was some discussion earlier that when we do the RFP, we'd be trying to find, they would, they would help us with that for five years. But then, I think as council, we had a discussion just preliminary, this is some type of trying to make that permanent. Would we be looking through that lens when we do the RFP? Okay.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yes, thank you, through the chair. We are trying to make the RFP as flexible as possible. So they're willing to reimburse us whatever fair market value is for five years. So if we're able to buy, lease, it, it can be a bit of a mixed bag, because there's also going to be a little bit of a dock piece that, that we could be looking for temporary usage as well, because we're going to lose that, that dock over on Finless and as well. There's a few things that we're trying to package together to see what's available in the market, so, yeah. We're going to keep it as flexible as possible.
Yep, absolutely, and there is some opportunity there. We do have folks on the side that do have launches next to their property. Perhaps there's an opportunity for those folks to take that business, because there is some parking in there. So, and perhaps keep it, because most of the parking, if you're looking during the season, is paid parking in Sicamous anyway. So there's an opportunity for them to build a business there and keep that business. Okay, let's move on. Anyone, sorry, anyone else? Let's move on. The Land Act Amendments, Sarah, did you want to give us a quick update on that? We had this, sorry, we had brought this to the last council meeting, and we're going to write a letter to the minister. However, before we go.
So we've got to leave for video passes.
I brought up the Land Act Agreement.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Through the chair, so from, at the last committee of the whole meeting, there was discussion about participating, participating in the engagement, but waiting until after the town hall that was held locally, and after the, the information session that was going to be, you know, done by the ministry. The ministry then said that the, the information session would be postponed, and then shortly after, we saw the news release that the Minister of Water, Land and Resource Stewardship, that they would not be moving forward with the proposed Land Act Amendments at this time, and that further engagement is required. So it's really just a housekeeping, because we were going to discuss it at further length, so.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, I think, like, I would, I would be in favor that Sicamous still sends a letter. They've, they've paused it, and I think that we also need to be very aware that it is a pause and, and let the government of BC know how we feel about it. So I think we do need to keep looking into it and moving forward.
Do you want to make a motion to direct staff? Is council interested in that? Counsel Beach?
Yeah, through the chair. Yeah, I, I support that. I think that that would be wise.
Counsel Bailey?
I, I would as well, yeah.
Counsel McCabe?
I, I think government got a lot of negative feedback on, on this proposed Land Act Amendments, and I've never seen an amendment get killed so quickly in government. And reading the article, I mean, they've got feedback from Forests Re, from mining, from resource sector, from tourism. I, I don't think adding our name to it's going to change how they move forward with this. They've got a pretty solid no re, it's a redo. So I don't think it's worth staff's time, because it's not, I don't think it's going to change how they react. They've already reacted. They've killed it, and they're not going to bring it forward until they do a ton of more engagement, and see what the, comes out, but yeah, they've gotten a lot of negative feedback already from thousands, hundreds of thousands of organizations and user groups and stakeholders. I, I think we have to be cognizant of the staff's time.
Thanks, Counsel McCabe. Counsel Evans?
Um, I, I would say at this time, it's pretty evident that they are, they're freaking out, and that's why they hit the pause button. So I think we should worry about a letter a little later on.
Counsel Rich?
Through the chair, I disagree. I feel like we live in Crown Land. We play in Crown Land. We have our snowmobiling. We have all kinds of things that bring money into Sicamous that, that Crown Land. We've got timber, we've got our loggers. And, and I, I don't think we should take a pause on this. I think we need to also, so the absolutely, people have stood up and said, this is unacceptable, and we need to move forward on this. Sicamous, even though we're only a little teeny community, I think it's absolutely imperative that we stand up and say, hey, here's our little voice, and we don't think so either.
Counsel Evans?
And as a friendly amendment to your suggestion of a letter, Counsel Rich, I, I'd like to suggest if we are going to write a letter, that then we thank them for listening to the public in BC and for taking a pause on this, because it does so much affect us.
Agreed. Sarah, go ahead.
Through the chair, I just, if, if a letter is going to be sent and staff will be drafting a letter, I want, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious as to what the position is from council. What, what would be the position that we would be communicating with the ministry?
Counsel McCabe and Counsel Bailey?
Guess what Counsel Evans said? I mean, it's already on pause, so we're not trying to ask them to pause it. They paused it. So it would be just a, a thank you letter for doing what they're doing, and, and looking forward to more engagement in my mind.
Counsel Bailey?
Yeah, I, I think it would be a little bit more than that. I think what we're talking about is some pretty broad policy positions that they were alluding to, that they were going to change, and it was going to really dramatically change kind of the landscape. So we can certainly thank them. There's no problem with that. But I think we should also state in that letter that it is important that widespread consultation happens with local governments or anything before this ever advances again. I think it's just reminding them that good process should involve municipalities and, you know, industry groups and everything else. Because this, we, we shouldn't forget that this was started without any broad consultation. Like, they were trying to just put this on a online consultation platform, and this, this major change would go through. So us trying to reiterate that, you know, this, we should be involved. We want to be a part of the, part of that discussion when it comes back, I think is a healthy thing, and if we're worried about staff time, I'm happy to take a first crack at it and send it to you, Sarah, and then we could build off of it if, if, if that's, you know, amenable. But then take it from here and pass it around to council and make sure they're okay with it. But I, I think it's a useful thing for us to do.
Counsel Beach? Through the chair, yeah, I, I really do think that consultation, making the point that we expected more consultation and do expect a lot of consultation on this, because it is a significant, it is a significant change, so that's what I'd like our letter to reflect.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you have enough information?
Through the chair, so what I'm hearing is that we want to thank the province for engaging, and that, that there needs to, that that needs to continue, that there's widespread engagement with local government and other stakeholders, and that a good process should be followed, be fair procedurally, and, and maybe more face-to-face consultation rather than an online
Yeah.
format.
Those are great.
I think, I think you absolutely got it.
And staff, staff can, is, can write the letter.
Okay. I, I wanted to offer just.
It's so. The motion.
I'm not good at these. I'd like to make, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to reach out to the provincial government to put a letter together thanking them for pausing, and then moving forward, we would like to have engagement, not only written, but verbally? What were we looking at?
Public, public.
Public engagement. Public engagement.
Public engagement. More public engagement, kind of a second or? Oh, are you amending?
A manful.
A, a very friendly amendment, I agree with what Council Rich said, but the word meaningful always has a big impact.
Yes.
Meaningful public consultation.
Sarah can add that word, yeah. I like you, they don't even think that's a friendly. I think that Sarah uses that quite often, actually. Do we have a second there on that? Council, we all in favor? Kate, Mary? Okay, communications emails. Shawna, you are up. So, sorry, Sean, I'm just gonna go, this is a, okay, no, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Yes, just for receipt for information for the council. I've just put together, I have those, there's some points for you to consider as best practice when communicating through email. If you'd like, I can go through them briefly or if you have any questions.
You can go through them quickly, sure, we're in a community.
When communicating with each other, with staff, with public, that we're always taking into account that we're building and maintaining a respectful workplace and that we're considering all of our policies and guidelines. That emails are records of the district, formal records of the district. That email should be limited to the provision of information, the request of information, you know, a request for agenda items as well as invitations, that sort of thing. That if members of council are requiring an update for information, that that request be submitted through staff, either DCO or CAO, as a request to put on as, as an agenda item. Just giving staff amount of time to prepare information accordingly is what would be required, as well as then everybody to participate publicly in any discussions that ensue. And also just keeping into mind that when we're having group conversations via email, that, that those are kept to a minimum. And just to allow, just being mindful to bring those discussions forward as agenda items so that those discussions are handled in a way. And the final item is just that staff direction be done through CAO. Any questions?
Any questions? We're good. Shawna, thank you very much. Oh, do you want me, sorry, Council Evans?
Just, just a comment through the chair, thank you, Shawna. I, I, I really appreciate the freshening up in our minds, I, of what email is supposed to be for. And, and it helped me a lot and I even highlighted some of it for my own notes. So thanks, helps to clarify, I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thanks Shawna, appreciate it. Okay, and there's a council governance session, April 4th, 2024. And you're going to give us an update, go ahead, Shawna.
Yes, I'm just gonna give a sort of verbal sweep kind of weekly book, April 4th. I know originally it said nine to three, I think nine to 12:30 or one is probably more likely, so we know of that. And it's just talking about responsible governance. There's been, you know, we have, we have a consultant that is coming in that, you know, has had several of these workshops. Really just, I think I attached the, you know, forging, response, forging of the path to responsible conduct in your local government to, to the agenda. We really will be looking, you know, everything will be loosely based on that document. And will be a special, a special council meeting with council that only involved in that. And just looking at the fostering of responsible conduct, maintaining good governance and then resolving conduct issues informally and some respectful workplaces. Are there any questions or comments on that?
Go ahead, Council Bailey?
Yeah, so I won't be able to attend the April 4th date. But I would actually like to have a discussion with councillors prior to us agreeing to do this. I, rather than just come forward from staff, I think we haven't had a chance to discuss a lot of stuff that I think we're gonna need to discuss. And, and I think this is one of the things that we can discuss about what sort of training we want and, and focus. There might be different opinions around the table on that. And so I, I just say that let's have that discussion first and then decide on it.
Thanks, Council Bailey. I, I, I think that this session can be tweaked to whatever it is that we want it to be tweaked to. And I think the, the following day, I'm in the same one with the CSRD, which is being kind of custom to, to that group as well. So I think it can be custom and I think that if, you know, council has some suggestions that perhaps that they want to send to Shawna, then Shawna can have a conversation with these folks to tweak it to what you would like to see.
Absolutely, thank you. And through the chair, I think that we're also proposing, I think Kelly was gonna maybe speak to this. We are proposing exactly what Counselor Bailey is requesting prior to this, that where that discussion can happen. I think we're looking at maybe next week or the following week, of setting aside some time and having that initial discussion with, with council only, with the possibility of a facilitator. And I don't have any, you know, if there's some timeframes that you guys want to, but we're looking, would be hopeful in the next couple of weeks of doing that. And then what flows out of that, we can make tweaks to the information that would be presented by the workshop facilitator on a report.
Council Beach?
Thank you, through the chair, yes, I just wanted, because we had asked, we had asked if we could do that in council and have that meeting. So if that happens before the governance, then, then I'm, that's, that's good.
But even, I guess my point is even if it doesn't, if you want to share with Shawna what you'd like to see, she can custom that, that session, right? So I'm just, you know, suggesting that if we don't, but if, if we can get together, that's great as well. Maybe just check with Ian because he's got probably the busiest schedule out of all of us. So let's make that date work and, Council Rich?
Yeah, through the chair, I just, I mean, I don't know what our budget is or how much money is set aside or how many hours we're expected to put into these training courses, that's never been brought up before. And absolutely, I can make my suggestions, but it would also be good if, if, if we knew what our options were. Because I don't run any training classes or know anything about it. So asking, hey, let, tell me what you need, I'm not sure what's available, I'm not sure the hours that are available and I don't know the cost that we're putting out to the community when we run these things. So that would be really good if we got some feedback on those things and then maybe we can make some decisions from there.
Sarah, go ahead.
Through the chair, so my understanding is that training for council and attending conferences is already budgeted for. I think it's around fifth.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, okay. I don't want to say that long number. So the training is covered within the budget already. And, and how we're seeing this is really, you know, since the election in, in October, there was orientation. But since orientation, there's been no real time for councils to come together and to look at governance and, and best practices and procedure. And, and so really it's about kind of like a regroup and a reorientation and an opportunity for you to come together and to discuss, you know, how you, governance and, and those things outside of regular district business and, and decision making. So I think that's the intent of staff organizing this and I just wanted to share that it is in the budget.
Council Beach?
Through the chair, Ian has already stated that he can't be available for that date. So I think it's really important that we're all there.
Council Bailey?
Yeah, I just want to kind of. I just wonder if we can set this aside first, us sit down, like I think we all would benefit from that. And then figure this piece out, what comes after that, that's all I'm suggesting. Rather than trying to set a hard and fast date here. I mean, it's a good suggestion and it, it, I think it, it deserves some attention. And then we can just have that discussion and maybe everyone just goes, absolutely, but maybe we want to focus on these elements as well. That's all I'm suggesting today. Just, it's good information and there.
Thank you, and I think that's what Sean is trying to do, to get us together prior to this so we can sit down. So that's, I think that's a direction that we need to go. Other, I think that the DOS is also trying to take advantage of a cost savings here in training because the CSRD has this group booked as well. So it's a cost savings to the district of Secamus to bring it in at the same time, which is always beneficial. I mean, we always need training and we always need to refresh our skills. So, I mean, perhaps we should move forward with it and those that can make it, make it and those that can't, can't. However, I still think that we should go ahead with Shawna's suggestion of getting us all together prior to that having a discussion. Council Evans?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was thinking that's probably what's going on and he's already in the area or she's already in the area for the training. And, and I get ongoing training, I don't get to pick the courses that once a year I have to take the course. And I'm prescribed by my ward often what to take it. One time my dad got a prescription for a course he had to go take in Prince George on how to listen better. He, he just went and took that course. So I, I think, I think that it's a good thing to have ongoing education and I'm willing to make the time to come to that thing since he's in the area already. But I agree that it'd be a good thing for us to be able to give some topics to our staff.
Sure.
Things that we'd like to be educated in, I always need to brush up in all this stuff. So I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Council Evans? Go ahead, Shawna.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair, and I welcome any, the, the loose governing will be on governance and conduct. So any topics that council has, please forward them to me via email. And I will gladly have a conversation with the consultant. If there's an appetite for a different date, I can look at that. But Madam Mayor was absolutely true, we were, we were looking at providing cost savings and savings in travel by sharing a consultant that we are very familiar with, that we've used in the past and is very, very good at what he does and very well versed in local government and what's coming this way to do training and we were, we're piggybacking on that. But if there's an appetite for different dates, it is really hard to get everybody in the, in the same room when it comes to alternative dates other than council. But please forward me the dates that do work for you and I can have that conversation.
Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, further to that, I would be curious as to know like how much more it would cost because I do think it's important that, you know, as many of, of council attends. So, and I, and I think it may just have to be shifted a little bit later if we move it. But, but I think that's okay, depending on what that number is.
And we probably do look at Juneish, I think, at that point, which everybody's getting busy, but these consultants are quite busy as well and we start looking at the timing on that and when they can come. But I definitely look at.
Okay, sounds good, anyone else? Thanks Shawna. Okay, signage, invasive mussels and Highway 1 bus stop, Council Rich? You added this to the agenda.
Oh, I just wanted to follow up from Daryl, through the chair. Daryl, have we had any updates on, on the bus stops or the mussel signs?
Uh, so the, let's start with the bus stops. So we've had two meetings with MOTI and they were taking it back to their engineering department and we haven't heard back, so it's been about three weeks. I don't have an update on that one.
Thank you.
Then the mussel signs. That's what we have out there now at the boat launches. And so, I mean, short of kind of showing you what we have out there now, that's, that was kind of my prep for this meeting. It's just the question whether or not we're signing for it, that's what we've got. So whether we want to do more, I, I don't know.
Council Beach?
Through the chair, well, I recall we had some discussion around signage specifically just for mussels that would be strikingly different and would catch public attention. And I, I'm not sure, but I think that's what we're talking about here is separating it out. I, I know we've got invasive species signage all over the place and that's great, but I doubt that anyone stands and reads it all. And I think we had some good suggestions from our, a suggestion from the gallery on something that would catch the public's eye. And maybe we should start looking at that as something to consider.
Council Evans and Council Rich?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I'm 110% for Shalawn's idea to use that zebra with mussels and, and craft a unique tension-grabbing sign that people will look at, like that graphic that Daryl had up there. Because that's what's needed, nobody's gonna, you're right, nobody's gonna read that, those signs, but it would probably be drawn to the idea that Shalawn had.
Council Rich?
Yeah, and through the chair, I mean, I, I thought that's where we were at four weeks ago or six weeks ago when we had that conversation and Brian piped in and, and I thought we actually agreed, I don't have the notes in front of me, that that was something, we actually talked about that we pulled the $4,000 back from Wild Safe Above the Bears and that was maybe where that money was gonna go and we were gonna investigate that, we looked at different images. So I'm actually surprised that that's where we're at, I'm, I'm surprised, but that's okay.
Sarah, through the chair, so I think this brings back the importance of motions so that we ha, can document the decision of, of the committee or council because it was discussed, but there was no motion. And the motion really should be directing staff to investigate and then, and to look at, you know, what the cost is to have the signage and get it designed. And I think there was some dis, discussion around, you know, is it making light of the situation? So I think if it's still the, you know, if it's still a desire that we just, if there's a motion to direct staff, can move forward. So apologies for the confusion on that.
Council Bailey?
Yeah, I, I want to say that's a really good point, but there should be motions, everything that we kind of do here, if we can have a paper trail for it, even if it's a, like, I'm not, not harping, it's a verbal updates or anything, but it's, it's just good for us because it, it helps us follow along and then go back. So I, I agree with Sarah's suggestion and maybe somebody wants to make a motion today. But yeah, I just think it's good practice.
Kate, you too, you got, you got something going on here, you on?
I don't, I, I'm surprised, that's all.
Kate, yeah, well, as per Sarah's explanation, it's got to be a motion for a paper trail. So Pam, go ahead.
Through the chair, I, I would like to make a motion that we, we explore the cost of signage. And, and the idea that was put forward really came from a member of the gallery and it was a good idea, putting the zebra and the, and a propeller covered with these mussels together. But just, just the signage, I think I actually had written down where I think the, the signage would need to be placed. So sort of a costing out, not only the production of the signs, but figuring out where, how many signs we would need and where we would want to start placing them to protect the lake and maybe reach some other people traveling in other directions. I think we're in a key location to actually catch a lot of its mention here. So costing that out would be the first thing to do.
Council Bailey, then Council McCabe?
Can I just give that a little wordsmith?
Yes, you can.
Okay, to direct staff to investigate the cost of the signs, of more impactful signs as per the example we had and bring our report back to council.
Thank you, could I make a friendly amendment to that? Thank you, I would like staff to also check with the Invasive Species Society because I don't, they've got a program and a plan and I don't want to step on their toes with their program and plan. So I would like us just to work in harmony with them or double check with them, just have a conversation so that we're all.
So the friendly amendment would be in conjunction with.
Checking.
Checking with related organizations.
Correct.
Sure that it aligns.
Yes, aligns with theirs.
Through the chair.
Good?
Through the chair, we can include that information.
Thank you, Council Rich?
Can I add another friendly amendment to the amendment? Can I add another friendly amendment to the amendment? That we look in the cost of adding a QR code. Because it would be great that if these signs had a QR code and then it goes into what's going on.
That's a good idea.
We're getting just the price right now, cost, right?
And just one question, are we talking signage just at the lake, within our municipality? Are we talking billboards?
Counselor McCabe.
I think in Tampa, there are boat launches and anywhere where people have access to the water sort of thing in our community.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't think we have the budget for billboards and our signage budget. Okay, go ahead. Counselor Rich.
Well, I was thinking both, but could we not cost it out so that at least I know how expensive billboards are?
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
Few quotes on billboards.
That sounds good. Okay. Okay, are we good?
I'll call the question, do you have everything you need? So Counselor Beach made the motion and then there was friendly amendments, but there's no second or, so we just see a second or Bailey.
Okay, all in favor?
Carried.
Thank you. Okay, strategic priorities update.
Kelly. Yes, thank you, through the Chair. So this is just on here, we met, just for a quick update. So we met on February 2nd, 2024 to make a few modifications to our strategic plan. So we, we have the same focus areas that we've always had and there are several items in here. Pursue the active transportation plan, work with CSRD on the rec center, as well as protect and grow our tourism industries, no mobiling and other, those were items that were changed. There were a couple other action items that were taken out as per our discussion. So it's just, just giving you an update here and we'll bring this probably later on formally to council for, you know, to, to bless it. And we'll put a revised updated date as of February 2nd on our strategic portfolio, strategic plan chart. Also, when we had our meeting in February, it's not identified in here, but it was discussed and we'll formally maybe put it in, in a document. Was the areas that we were going to prioritize over the next couple of years as there are resource and financial constraints. And they, we collectively agreed that we are going to focus on health and wellness as it relates to developing the Shushua Healing Center and the recruitment of healthcare professionals. We are also going to focus on housing, implementing the housing strategy, supporting Eagle Valley Senior Citizens Housing Society Development and providing land for a housing project. We're going to focus on our municipal assets by maintaining and expanding our infrastructure specifically as it relates to the wastewater treatment plant. As well as we were going to focus on recreation and tourism, investing in our outdoor recreational spaces such as the Owlhead Bikes Park, Finless and Pump Truck, as well as the pedestrian bridge over the Sicamous Narrows. So just a little update reminder.
Hey, Council, do you have any questions, comments? Counselor Bailey.
We're just gonna get all those updates done and then I think we're gonna discuss again about portfolios and how we want to go forward on that. But I guess that'll come forward a later date, right?
Correct. We can bring that forward at any future meeting. There's a lot of on our plate with a bunch of other stuff right now. So yeah, that's on our future list of something to discuss.
Comments? Go ahead, Counselor McCabe.
I, I think that's great, good stuff. It's, it's, gives us a direction. We're, we're steering the boat, boat's got a rudder. This is actually supposed to be a galley in a, in a boat.
Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else? Okay, let's keep moving forward here. Counselor Reports. Counselor Evans, do you want to start?
Thanks, yeah, the last couple of weeks, besides council stuff, I have, I went to the early years meeting chaired by Gwyneth Gao. Did a great job of assembling professionals that take care of children in our area. Hardworking people that are helping our kids how to read, how to take care of them and help the schools. And I also went last Wednesday, all day, took me all day to go to the library meeting. I'm on the, I'm our rep for the board for the library. And they challenged us as board members to make sure we're using our library. I noticed when they said the average man reads one book after high school. I, I realized that I was slipping into only reading for work. I was getting lazy and just going home and streaming TV shows. So I have gone back to, to reading and now I'm on my third book in a, in a year. For me, that's good. So I would challenge you guys to go to the library and our CEO Danielle Hubbard is an awesome person at the library. She's going to be here at committee of the whole meeting in a couple of weeks to, to talk about the library and share her thanks for our support too. And we're so lucky to have a library of this caliber in a town this size. So go to the library, get a card, you can even take out movies and they have, just so you know, if you like to watch TV like me, they have with your library card and online streaming platform like Netflix, you can watch good TV shows and movies for free. There you go. If you have a library card, there you go.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Evans. Counselor Rich.
I would like to bring out that it's Pink Shirt Day and it's about being kind and not bullying and being respectful to everyone as they speak. And that's not one day, that's every day. And so I really encourage everyone to continue to do that on a regular basis. I have been meeting with both PACs at the school and working with the PACs, just doing a bunch of fundraising and trying to get some new equipment into both of our schools. So that's been pretty exciting. I've done, gone out with Daryl and staff for the rail trail, which I appreciate, thank you. And did a walk last Saturday and learning a lot of stuff there. I've been at the Eagles game volunteering and go Eagles, go, they're in the playoffs with Camlips right now. And we're hoping we're going to move on from there. It's been a little stressful, I'm not going to say it's not. And then last, our own Sideli from Sicamous is going, I'm calling it out. She's nine years old, she's going to Victoria this weekend to compete in an international competition for gymnastics. And we need to continue to champion these kids. We've got lots of them coming out and again, I'll challenge every counselor at this table to find a kid in our community and find out what they're doing and, and bring it to council every two weeks because this, these are the people who are picking our old folks homes. So let's look after them.
Thank you, Counselor Rich. And that would be Sarah's daughter. Congratulations, Sarah, and all the best of luck. Malcolm, sorry, not Counselor McCabe. No, Malcolm, what's?
Right, Malcolm. Yeah, well, I was in Mexico. Some good news with Eagle Valley Transportation through, I forget the name of the ministry. It's for transformation of seniors for transportation. Eagle Valley Transportation is getting a $50,000 grant to replace the, our older car, it's a 2019 with a 2024. And yes, that's good news for the community, for seniors, for accessing healthcare.
Counselor Beach. Thank you, through the Chair, been busy. I, I've been on the rail trail quite a bit as well. Not only the walk that, that we invited the public to join with us, but actually got my first side by side ride on that trail as well. That was pretty exciting. And yeah, so three or four forays along the different points of that rail trail to try and get the walking experience. Out past Poliar Point. I have attended an Eagles playoff game and hope to make another one. We had interagency on the 20th. Always well attended, both on Zoom and in council chambers. Thank you to council chambers for facilitating such use of this, this here for those meetings. They're always good. Siobhan and I have done some work on and have reached out and, and we're trying to build a couple of education sessions. One on cyber bullying and online predators and a second on gateway drug use path to addiction. We've had to, both of them would have really involved the participation of school personnel and school district. And we've had to postpone, just, just the timing is not working out well. But we haven't, we are going to try and still pull these off. And we will be partnering with the library and, and Eagle Valley Community Support Society. And those, so stay tuned, we're not, not giving up, we're just going to have to set new dates and we'll bring that forward. Attended with a couple of other counselors, the Public Land, just a public gathering in Salmon Arm, which it was really interesting. Drew a lot of people about the Land Act legislation. And like I said, the turnout was huge and that was really interesting. The rail trail walk on the 24th, sorry, I have a long one and if I don't write it, I won't, I won't remember all of, all of it and it's all good. Yeah, so we had a lot of really, really great diversity on the rail trail walk on Saturday. And I really want to say thank you to, to all the public that came out from any side of that issue. Everybody was, there was a lot of people there to experience it and that, that was, that was huge. Oh yeah, before we're done with this month, there's a couple of meetings coming up that I hope to make. And I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking of the, for the healing center very soon. So March 11th.
Thank you, Counselor Beach. Counselor Bailey.
Yeah, I'll make this quick since I know we have delegations. So lots of stuff on the rail trail, don't need to go over that again, but that's been two weeks of quite a, quite a few, you know, engagement meetings and talking with people. But the one event that I do want to talk about and say thank you very much was the Sled Sicamous event. They had a very successful, I was there representing, but also working because we catered the event. But there was about 250 people at that event and it's always a great one for the community. And it just showed how much of an economic driver sled sicamous is to this town in the winter and just the enormous potential that, that I think we do have around that industry here. And I just want to say to them, thank you very much. They've done a great event and they continue to build that whole sector. So that's it.
Great, and I'll make mine really quick as well. That same night I was at an Eagles game and three of the players who have hit their peak in age have moved on. And there was a bit of a presentation for them out there as well. So that was great and I attended the CSRD meeting on February 15th. And we covered a bit of the conversation this morning. We've had a reduction in, in draft two of our finances, there are some cost cutting there. So that was excellent. Resolution of forest management was, a resolution came out of the CSRD meeting in forest management and removing some of the old growth and just managing our forests and our forest fires and planning for the future. And they also, the CSRD also gave us support on our letter of Bill 34, which was the illicit drug bill and the, the guardrails that the government was putting back on it, but now is on pause and has gone back to, to the court. So they have supported us on that as well. Attended the Land Act open house that Mr. MLA, MLA Kylo had and it was an amazing turnout. I think they had planned for 200 and there was like 350 there, they split the rooms up. So, and those sessions were, are very beneficial and the message was heard loud and clear. So it's very important that we support those items when they come, you know, have a water crown and we do have a lot of tenure here, water and land. So it's important for us to support that. Okay, so, and that's it for me. I've got, I'm heading into Kelowna on the 8th. There is a new group that is formed for zebra and quail muscle prevention, a working group. So I will be meeting with them and I've invited Counselor Beach to come along with me. And I think a couple of representatives from ECDEV will be coming as well. So that's what's coming up. Okay, so moving right along, it's 2:05, we're going to get into our delegations and we have, to start with, we have the District and Sicamous Recreation Center. Update, we have Derek Sutherland, Community and Protective Services Manager. Thanks for being here today, Derek.
This is all.
I can hear you. You're still, yeah, get a little closer and speak up because we've got about 22 or 25 people on Zoom right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So since the Chair mentioned, I'm the General Manager of Community Protective Services, Shushua Regional District. And it's a recent portfolio for me. And as part of that portfolio, I am, or have been managing the Sicamous Arena. And of course, that's what we're going to be updating you on today. Some of the changes and tweaks that we've, we've been working on at the arena. So there is that we say that it's an absolute pleasure to be involved with this community and with this community asset. It's absolutely wonderful project to be part of and getting to know the staff at this arena has been a wonderful experience as well. You have some amazing people, long-term employees at this arena who genuinely love this community and believe, care about this community, care about this. It's, and it's always a pleasure to work with people that are that, all they do and passionate about what they do. So it's been a really welcome addition to my portfolio. So I just wanted to talk about some of the key initiatives that we've been working on through my tenure with the, with the group. Culture of, of customer service and making sure that any obligations that we've made to the community are upheld and, and potentially at the expense of revenue. But the message to the, the crew at the arena and the, at the arena manager is if we promise somebody some space and we get a last minute cancellation, we still have to fulfill those obligations and, and provide that customer service to the community and make sure that those facilities are available and that staffing is, is in place for those sorts of things. We've also done some team building work and worked on some morale with the, with the staff at the arena. And we had a two day session back in November that was absolutely incredible. It's lots of fun where we got to know each other as a team and found out what makes each other tick and how we can support each other as a team. And that work was, was incredibly interesting as you can imagine. And like I say, the group is, is great, so it was really fun getting to know them. So we're, few of the harder type items that we're working on, like more tangible items are the allocation policy. That has been a bit of a gap to this point and really needs to be updated and it's a higher priority. So I have a draft of that policy sitting in my inbox right now and we're looking forward to getting that in front of the board and getting something tangible in there. One of the big issues that we've been having without this allocation policy in place is the late cancellation of ICE, which affects staffing. That goes to that customer service piece that I was alluding to earlier. We've had lots of cancellations that are less than a week out and that throws a real wrench into, into the works at the arena. We've also had some user groups reach out and say that they aren't getting the ICE that they want or they, they aren't getting the right priority. This allocation policy will make it really, really clear about who gets what and where. So it will make it clear for the staff, it'll also make it clear for user groups, which I think is really going to be beneficial for the, the asset itself and the community as a whole and, and those user groups. So then the other thing that we're really focusing on right now is the online booking software. And I know we spoke about that with Counselor Bushell and Counselor Rich. And I know that was a real priority for the district, getting that sorted out. So we're working on getting that and I think Jeff, our arena managers, has been meeting today or tomorrow with our representative from our online software. So we're hoping to get that done real quick. So we recently had a meeting back in December with Counselor Rich and Counselor Bushell that outlined some of the things that they would like to see from this arena. And we also had the Eagles in attendance and talked about some of their issues. And it was really, really nice to sit down and have that conversation and really get into the. And it was really, really nice to sit down and have that conversation and really get into the meat of the matter. And we came out of there, or I came out of there really, really happy, knowing that some of the issues that we're having or most of the issues that we're having were actually not that difficult to address and, and throw some solutions behind. And I think these, that culture of customer service, that online booking software and the allocation policy is going to really help us get in front of some of those issues that the district would like to see solved and the user groups would like to see solved and the staff would like to see solved. So I think it's going to make everything a lot better going forward. So it's a, it's a high priority for us to get in front of. Council had a few questions about some of the decisions around the operations of the arena, particularly around the summer ice issues. So, and questions around opting for the summer ice and whether or not we were generating enough revenue to cover our costs. So it was a really valid question and one we were asking as well. So I went to our finance department, we did a bit of a rough audit on what we were spending in the arena. And what we found was that there's a base cost to operating the arena even when the ice is out that we have to factor in, has to be taken into consideration. This ammonia plant has to be certified every single day, 365 days a year. So we always have to have full-time staff working in this arena. So the, what we found was that the additional cost for having ice in the six weeks where we have hockey camps was costing the CSRD or the arena service area about $6,000 as an incremental cost over and above what it costs to keep the arena without ice. So the profit from the hockey schools over the course of that six weeks, about $21,000. So we were in the black of about $15,000 overall with that summer ice. So was really happy to see that our systems were in place to make sure that we were staying where we needed to be. And the economic development opportunities of all those families coming into the area, spending money and to get in a hotel room, even in the reference, that sort of thing is, are those intangible kind of cost benefits to the community as well. So the questions I was asked is what effort is being put forward to increase the revenues at the arena? Absolutely a fair question. And there are things that are being done. We got a new contractor in our concession, which is actually creating a bit of a destination experience for people who want a great meal and are just popping into the concession to grab some food, that sort of thing. That's also catering meals for rentals, that sort of thing. However, we haven't focused a lot of our attention on revenue generation to this point. We want to get those systems in place. We want to get that allocation policy in. Want to get that booking software in place. But it's always top of mind for Jeff over at the arena. He's socially needs things, he's putting on the website, he's having conversations with arena users about those revenue generation. However, we're not solely, we're not completely focused on revenue generation right now. We're looking at getting those base systems so that we can get ahead of those revenue generating bookings in the future. So. The last thing that I want to speak to is facility improvements. We have had a facility study done and the arena is going to need some substantial renovations in the medium term. And so those renovations, a roof alone, we're looking at about $1.80. And an additional renovations on top of that, we're looking at, you know, several million dollars overall. And so we're starting to put together a plan and develop, for, looking for opportunities for granting, providing, provide us with that new roof and any other renovations that need to be done. Luckily, our plant is only about three years old. So that's a huge expense. And that will carry us through as far as, as ice is concerned. So the staff at the arena are keeping that place pristine. I have never been in an arena that is so tidy and well-kept as the Sycamore's Arena. And I've been in a lot of arenas having kids in minor hockey. So with that, I'll, I'll ask if you have any questions, manager, and I'd have to answer those.
Thank you very much, Derek. And I am certain that this council has a ton of questions for you. So councillor Beech.
Good chair. Thank you very much for that. I guess, I wonder if you could elaborate on the hours of operation for me and sort of the philosophy behind those, other than the fact that I know it's expensive to run and pay the staff. But just the choice of hours, I'd like to know sort of what the, what the thinking is.
So in what regard?
Daily and on weekends.
Okay, so the, right now or to this point, the arena has been open when it's been booked. And if it, if those bookings aren't happening, then, then they're not being staffed and the arena isn't being, and the bookings take place. So one of the issues was that we would have three hours of bookings of ice time. We would also have the healthcare room booked for a gathering. And then the ice booking would cancel. And then you'd phone the booking from upstairs saying, I'm sorry, we have to, we have to cancel your booking or we have to postpone your booking by an hour. And, and then we wouldn't open the arena until the next ice booking and then rebook the upstairs room. And what we're doing now is that if that is booked, then, then the arena is being opened for just that one small booking. We end up operating at a loss, but we have an obligation to those customers who have booked that facility. So right now, we're, we're opening as the arena is booked.
Councillor Beech, go ahead.
Um, what about during the week? That's weekends, I'm thinking.
Sure. So thank you through the chair. Same sort of thing. I, I don't know the exact hours that Jeff has the arena open right now, but he's opening for bookings and scheduling staff per those bookings. Cal Franson, who's our full-time arena operator and our lead hand, is working Monday to Friday through the days. And then it's open in the evening until the last booking is done.
Thank you. Nice councillor. Councillor Rich.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Good to see you. You just really confused me on that one. Sorry. I'm like, whoa. So on the website, the hours are Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. And generally the arena, because I drop off lots of skates and do different things there, the doors are open. But again, we, we don't know when the arena is open. So it's, I mean, I go to Eagles games and I, I go to the little kids' hockey games and stuff like that. I'm wondering where do we find these hours and how do we know? So on, on your guys' website, it's, 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 you know, post, I think it's 8:30 to four or something like that. And generally the doors are open. When I've had to drop off skates, they are. But do we, so there's not, like, how do we tell the public when the arena is open?
So have you had those experiences, sorry, through the chair?
Yeah.
Experiences where that 8:30 to 4:30 time, you've gone to the arena and it's not been open?
Yes. I, I've like tried the doors, but that doesn't mean someone's not, you know what I mean? But not often. But again, I'm just wondering, like, you're saying the arena is only open when it's booked? Or the arena is open, when is the arena open?
So the arena will be open at those times that are posted on the website, 8:30 to 4:30. And, and then after hours, it will be open when it's booked. And then it will close after the last booking. So those hours, 8:30 to 4:30 are when Cal Franson is working, he's the full timer. He does those weekday days. So it'll be open then. There is considerations with ammonia. So if there's nobody in the site, it would have to be closed, but I would expect that those doors are, are open and available.
And Tru, can I follow up?
Yes, you may.
Is that something that we can tweak? Because generally it's like, like for me and what I do within the community, I'm involved with kids a lot within the community. And I'm also a parent that works full, full-time. So those are Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 are really not times that, that we can get kids out on the ice or we can get people out on the ice. So is that something that the CSRD has looked at to, to maybe vary those hours? That we're doing like a one to nine or something like that? So that the arena is maybe more accessible to the people in the community? Because our kids are elementary school, the bell goes at 2:16. And our high school, our last bell goes at 3:36. So our kids are in school during those hours. And we do have some homeschool kids and they actually really use a lunch bunch. Like that's really great. That, that's being really well used by our homeschool kids. But our homeschool kids also, if, if we alternated the hours a little bit, if, you know, it was a two o'clock because they're homeschool, I'm sure those folks that are, are homeschooling could, could adjust. Is that something that you guys have looked at or thought about?
Yeah, through the chair, absolutely. So, and completely open to any of those booking requests. And if we have the staff for it, then we're absolutely open to it. And in the winter, depending, we have five staff so that we can draw on other, that part-time other than Cal. So there is opportunities for that booking, additional booking times as they're needed. And of course, minor hockey is, and figure skating is there all the time in the evening when kids are at a school and, and using that arena. So if there are times that there's private bookings that want to book it, that is available to the public.
Go ahead, councillor.
Through the chair. No, I'm, I'm not talking about private bookings. Is it possible or have you guys ever considered actually just shifting the whole time of the arena to make it more accessible to, to when the general public is not working? Because 8:30 to, to four is not a time for, for the general people that use, you know, that use the ice are going to be out there. So is that something that you folks have looked at, that, that we kind of shift the time? And, and that, 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 you know, staff member, staff, not that a booking, but that maybe the arena would shift so that there, it's, it's a bit more accessible and then we're not using, having to book and then pay overtime or extra staff? That that, you know, 8:30 to 4:30 shift maybe goes to 11 to nine? And then we add, if we need more, more hours on the backend, all of a sudden there's 10 o'clock in the, in the morning, people that want to come out and book that, that that's more viable. But I would guess, and I've not ever run an arena, but I would, I would suspect that the ice would be more used kind of from 4:30 to 9:30. That's when people are around, right?
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Through the chair and something we're open to. And, and I'll discuss with the arena manager about how that looks and, and what those morning bookings look like right now at the Sycamore's Arena. I'm not sure what that ice availability is between 8:30 and 9:00. So, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks to councillor Bailey.
Yeah. So thanks for being here and thanks for going through some of those items. I think it's been a bit of a mystery, at least how the arena has been operating. We've seen some really large cost escalations. And maybe you can just touch on that because that's been significant over the last three years.
Yeah, and through the chair, some of the, we're looking at a 40-year-old rink. And, and we had to do some major upgrades. We're also having to reserve our expected costs down the road. And so we are, the staff is keeping this rink in impeccable condition, but it is 40 years old and it was built by volunteers back in the day. And, or maybe as a, as a community-led initiative back when it was first built. So if getting towards the end of its lifespan where it needs some major renovations and that ice plant was a major addition to the rink, and we're going to have to do some more in the future. So we know that we have to reserve dollars in the future.
Yep. Okay. Thanks for that. I think, yeah, I mean, we could talk about the budget all day probably, but maybe I'll just ask another question here. You know, Sycamore's contributes about 63% of the ongoing annual cost. That's, that's the split.
So councillor Bailey, sorry, can you just use your mic and speak up a little bit?
Back down here. Well, that's not working. There, there we go. So we pay about 63%, that's the cost kind of split. But you were talking about the allocation policy. And I'm just wondering if you would, are going to be open to giving us a copy of that allocation policy to give you guys feedback on, because I haven't seen that up to this point. It sounds like it's a really major kind of piece.
Yeah, and through the chair, absolutely. We'll be engaging with the CIO and Daryl to make sure that.
No, I meant council.
Yeah, I mean, that's through the staff to bring it to council. So that would be our conduit towards this council is through the CIO.
We are happy to bring in chair.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have more questions, but.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just, so revenue versus expenses. Like we, we've seen revenue has stayed static, you know, for a very long time, really not a good sign. You know, we're running something that, you know, we know where inflation is impacting. We should see a net uptick on that revenue side. We haven't. We've seen certainly an uptick on the expense side. So you, you mentioned earlier that you had not been focusing on the revenue side. But I presume that you're now directing yourself to that. And I'm wondering if you had any kind of concrete plans of how you would build that revenue. We've talked a little bit about the times that the arena are open. And maybe that's one of the, the problems is that we're not open at the times when people actually want to give us money. But I wonder if you put any more thoughts into that?
Yes, through the chair, the next step in our evolution of work on with the arena is revisiting the race and peace bylaw. That's going to be the first step in the revenue generation portion of the, the look, the deep look at the Sycamore's Arena and how we improve things. We're also going to seek some direction from the board level about what is that acceptable ratio of revenue? Is it 15%? Is it 20%? Is it 25% of the budget? Where would the board like to see that, that revenue at? So that we can start working at achieving those numbers. And but really the basis of that is the systems and the system is the bylaw and the race and peace bylaw.
Councillor? Councillor Beech?
Um, thank you through the chair. I, I just want to go back to hours of operation. I, I do support councillor Rich's point about hours of operation and just changing the block so that it just seems so counterintuitive to not have your recreation center open at all in the evenings or much at all on the weekends. And I, and I was one of the ones that picked rocks with Rona off of the foundation of that, that facility. So have hung out many hours in it. And yeah, I, I'm just really very curious about sort of the thought going into how they've allocated the, the operation hours. Recognizing that evenings are probably more accessible to a greater use by the public. And, and also recognizing that in the past, we've had relationships with Salmon Arm needing to use space and stuff. And I'm hoping that that's continuing. And, and yeah, so, yeah, I just, I just do, I just do wonder about, you know, sort of not making it more available. Even if, even if people can book it, or like we used to have ladies hockey teams. We used to have men's evening hockey teams. Is it that because it's not open, they perceive that that's not available to them? I, I don't understand, but it just, it's just. it's just um, I think we need to look at the allocation of 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 hours and the time of the day that that we're putting out to the public because maybe that is affecting whether or not they think it's available to them. And it would be to your advantage, it would be to everybody's advantage to change that public perception, if that's what it is. I'm not saying I know for sure. I just know what it used to be like and and uh yeah, so.
So through the chair, um I think the reality of the um the evening time at the arena right now is that it's fully booked. Uh, it's fully booked for figure skating. It's fully booked for minor hockey. Uh, we've been uh trying to help Enderby uh get some ice time after their ring closed. So um the you'll see a bit of a spike in revenues because of that. Um, but it's not that the rink isn't open in the evening. It's just those regular hours of operations that we've promised the public that the doors will be open are that Monday to Friday, eight thirty to four. And uh but it is open after that because of bookings and that I think the perception issue is going to be largely addressed with this booking software, the online booking software, where people will see that ice is available to them up until whatever point uh we want to make it available, whether that be eleven o'clock or midnight for a minute. Whatever it is, um that that ice will be bookable online and people will be able to see it. The idea behind the online booking software is to create that transparency so people have can go uh onto their computer or onto their phone and see when the rink is available to them. So uh I'm really hoping that uh that uh software um addresses those concerns.
Thanks, Derek. Counsel Rich.
Uh, through the chair. So the the I honestly don't have the numbers in front of me, but but the staff is it's like we spend a lot of money on staff or you spend a lot of money on staff and we pay sixty-four percent of that. And again, just to to follow up with Pam. Um, I don't know if we should be adjusting that time. Um, are we spending our money wisely being open from eight thirty to four thirty? That full time person beyond from eleven to nine and then filling in. And if someone wants a two o'clock or a ten AM, then then we pay those folks over here at at the bottom end and instead of paying people from four thirty on and and filling that time. Um, I think we really need to address that and I think that's a big, because we are, Sikkamu's is paying sixty-three, sixty-four percent. So, you know, we got a pretty big vested interest in this. Um, uh, I'm also gonna uh just ask you about um just a couple of things we sat and chatted about on December nineteenth, I believe. Uh, we talked about the um cases in the interior of the arena. Um, we had a lot of things moved upstairs and 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 again, that question was never answered. It was put at the very back and I'm not sure if you've been in the arena, but you go up to the back of the bleachers and and all that. Those are trophy cases. Uh, there are two boys that died in a car accident that were very important to this community. And and their their jerseys hung in the arena. There were, I mean, there's pictures of Kel France and when he was twenty odd years old and all those guys, which when you walked into the arena, it it made you feel like home and you could identify. And also when when you walked in, you were like you're in Sikkamu's, here we go, right? Like we had a little utzva. And now you walk in and you feel like you're walking in. Actually, the Shushua Hospital has more um warmth than the front of our arena. We addressed that with you on December twentieth. Will you be addressing that?
Yeah, through the chair, um it's uh certainly, we've had to prioritize some of the items and and we've discussed some of the areas we've been addressing. And uh and I have talked uh with the arena staff about that. And I think what we were trying to accomplish by moving that out was creating more space in the arena uh when we were getting those large crowds of tournament and kids uh throwing their bags around, that sort of thing. And uh they're finding that the front lobby area was really tight. And uh we've got to remember that the arena staff are Sikkamu's residents and Sikkamu's hockey players and people who uh raise their families in this rink. So that stuff is really important to them too. Though it wasn't an easy decision for them to move, but there was some kind of issues with the uh the space available in that uh lobby area of the arena and decided to move that over. So it is discussions that I'm having with them. It's not something that we've solved to this point because it's a little lower down on some of the things that we have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. And through the chair, it is um and I understand it's lower down. Um, but it it is our community and it is, it's passion and heart and it's stuff on walls. Like it's the stuff on the walls are not taking up space. And and so I understand that that when you're looking at it on paper, it's maybe not a bigger thing as thing. But I I do know I spend a lot of time in this community um just daily out doing stuff. And it it has hit home, I'll tell you that straight up. People people are concerned and they they don't feel like it's a place to gather. Um, and you and I spoke with that on on December twentieth. Um, through the chair.
Okay, I got a couple more lined up here, so.
Yeah, no, I can be quiet for a sec.
Okay, um Counsel Bailey, before I give you the floor, I'm gonna ask Director Martin to uh to step up because I think she's got some comments and she does have invested interest in our recreation center as well.
Thank you and thank you for allowing me to speak. I know that you don't have to do that, so I appreciate it. While you were talking about the change in operation, I have a question for Derek. Uh preschool is in that building. They need a certified person in there. So when are you going to change the hours? There needs to be somebody there when preschool is operating. So it's really challenging and you know, we can change the hours, we can extend the hours, but you need to remember that there will be a cost. If we can find certified staff to be in the arena, because we are, you know, we're running on a fairly minimal south as it is and it is difficult to find uh people to to work in an arena that has that certification. So, you know, I I I've heard a lot of this conversations before. I know that there's user groups that want to use the arena and quite often the user groups didn't want to have to pay. But as taxpayers, we have to charge them. And so our rates and fees by law will try to make some of them sharp. I mean, we we'd all love everybody to be able to go in there for free and use it whenever they wanted to, but it costs money to maintain it and it costs money to staff. And so it's a challenge and we've been trying to address that. Um, as you know, we've had some um some staff, some senior staff leave our organization and they were working on things and now Derek is stepping up and taking over and Fiona has just uh come on and she will be the one that will be looking after it. So um the the cases that you're talking about, um part of the problem, I think, with the cases when they're on the wall downstairs, they're right at the height where kids can hit themselves. So there was always these benches in front of them. And and that took up a fair bit of room. They were very big benches with arms on them. I mean, we've all sat with them for hours when we have rows of arenas. We did take up a lot of space. One of the things that that uh when I was up uh at the arena and talking to staff, I wondered if perhaps where they are right now in the uh upper part of the um bleachers, if we could focus some lighting on them to bring attention to them. Because I know how important it is. I'm the president of minor hockey that got the call when those boys died. Uh, whoever, forget that name. And so to me, it's just as important as it is to the, you know, the surrounding community. They're part of our our organization. They're part of our kids. So I know them. Um, but when you walk into the arena now, uh it it looks good. It looks clean. It's it's warm. I love our arena because it's warm. And although people wouldn't actually make it warmer. And I think that we have outstanding staff. I I do know that that the the trophy cases has been something that's been brought up to me, but I'm just wondering if the light would help. And I know when I talked to staff at the arena, they thought that was a good idea and thought maybe try to add even a bunch of it. So so if there's any other questions that you want to ask me, I'm, you know, I'm a psycho person. Yes, the people that are supposed to know, know all the answers. So I think I would say what's the answer, but but it's our arena. And, you know, we all have lots of interest in making sure that it's a good arena and it's well maintained, that it's here for the future for all of our kids. Because we have kids that have done exceedingly well at our arena, because people have been over backwards to try and make sure that they have access to ice or access to whatever they needed. And this community as a whole has supported them all along.
Thank you, Director Martin. Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I agree, it is our arena. Um, and and I guess that's where my problem with all of this has lied right from the beginning is the governance aspect around it that um, you know, at the end of the day, we don't operate it, we don't have a say in it. And that's been historically. Um, and and you can respond to that, but I I'm gonna just make my comments here. That we don't have a seat at that table. Um, we do pay sixty-three percent, but we don't actually have an active um engagement. We, there was a more active engagement when the um when the society ran it. Um, certainly in in Sikkamu's, but actually I I had another question just for for staff and more about the online um booking is that we've heard about the online booking for about a year now. And I'm just wondering when that is actually going to be completed, because that's, this has been something that has gone on for quite a while, but it's still going.
Right. Yeah, that's through the chair. Thank you. Um, so my understanding is is that uh this has gone on and for a while and it's probably too long. Um, and my understanding is is that it was on before and then was turned off uh because of issues. And uh what we're gonna do now is we're gonna turn it on. Uh, again, like I say, Jeff is meeting with um our representative from software company uh to get that uh back up and going either today or tomorrow. And uh my hope is, my understanding is that uh it won't be long after that before we can turn it back on our website. And and then if we have any issue, we can kind of dig into those issues and try and solve them uh in real time and uh get a handle on that without having to turn it back to the drawing board again. So um I I really like the transparency of it and I really like uh the availability to people just to go in and see what's available to them.
Thank you. Okay, in um respect to time here, go ahead, Counsel Rich.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Through the chair. Derek, are we using booking, which is not, and it's actually been about three years that the online booking system hasn't worked. Just to put it in too. So and that was booking king, I don't know how to spell it. Um, Golden uses Amelia. What what system are we going to?
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, it's booking.
So we're going to stay with that system?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counsel, go ahead, Counsel Bailey. We'll take uh one more.
Yeah.
Move on.
I want to thank you for being here. Like any of the issues that we have to talk about don't involve just direct questions to you. I I I still maintain my my view on it. It's a governance issue. It's a there's a few other issues there to have, I think, meaningful discussions with the CSRD. You know, this arena serves both Sikkamu's and the surrounding area and actually even beyond the surrounding area, I would say. And we have to get this right. I would say that there's concerns. I have concerns that it's not working. Um, I've heard that from the community. So when we comment, we address these concerns, I just wanted to be in the light that being brought forward. Try to make this forward, uh you know, better. And if that entire, you know, that needs a governance change or if it needs a different approach to how we we manage these issues, then I certainly hope everyone's open for open for that. And I I am as well. So I just want to say thank you for being here.
I think, well, Derek, thank you so much for being here today. We really appreciate it. We know that it's a a new position and you are ironing out some of the wrinkles that that we've had in the past. And and I think moving forward, I think the relationship is definitely um more, there's more conversation going on, so I'm glad to, I'm glad to see that. And I think that will continue. And Daryl is now involved and working um with you as well. And so I think that uh I think it's moving positive. I think we're moving in a positive direction. So thank you very much for taking the time to be here today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could have just one more. Let you know as a counsel that uh we've always enjoyed a a good relationship through my role with Protective Services and the and the Shoe Shop and Run Super Program. And uh and that's going to continue, I hope, through uh the community services portfolio. It is really important to us to get this right. So it's really important that this asset works well for the community and we're going to work hard to make that happen. Uh, I would also like to uh introduce our new community services manager Fiona Baran.
Welcome Fiona.
The Sikkamu's arena will be part of Fiona's portfolio. So Fiona is about two and a half weeks in with us and uh has already um been a shining star and and taken a lot of weight off of a lot of shoulders. So it's been.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome Fiona. Thanks, Derek. Okay, we're gonna move on to um Shushua North Oconoggin Rail Trail Project. We have John McLean, CIO uh for the CSRD. And.
Catherine.
Is Chair Flynn coming up as well or? Okay.
Open to come up.
Okay, yes, if you want to join John or if you want to come up later. Okay. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Um, so uh thank you to Baron Anderson and CEO Bennett uh for inviting us here. We do recognize fully that uh the Sikkamu's council has been fully engaged on the spot last little while. Um, there's a fair amount to go that's going on right at the moment. Um, my my main purpose here today, other than answering questions uh is to uh is to inform counsel that um that the ownership group uh has met to discuss uh the situation. The ownership group is is committed to completing the rail trail as as was designed. Um, that um the the process is put in place. Were put in place in good faith, uh are consistent with the messaging that we received from this council, from the residents in the Narrows and from our consultation. So do want to point out a few things of clarification um in some of the correspondence that has been shared with us. We're not dealing with anything ignored at the Combe Shoe Shop and Trail District. That's that's not our role. That is ours. Um, we have been in communication with the property owners along uh the rail trails in the Narrows, uh both in Sikkamu's and the area. Uh, the process exists. Um, we are uh gonna be proceeding with rail trail development uh in accordance with the plan that was developed by Shoe Shop Trail Alliance in consultation with best practice uh and what happened in points south of us where there's already thriving, active development rail trail uh connected to this rail trail. Um, to uh incorporate those best practices. So uh as a as an ownership group, uh there's still commitment uh to proceed and we'll do so. You can ask anything and all questions when they send it to us. Uh, tricking our responsibility or making ourselves hard to find. Um, so that continues. Um, with uh with that, if there's any questions on what's going on, you have to try and answer them.
Counsel Rich. Through the chair. Thanks for joining us. Um, one of my, I I'm not sure if you've been out and walked lately, but one of my confusions is we've heard point five and three point five. When you walk it, I'm not sure where we're starting the zero. So is that zero from uh like I'm gonna go say where the CPR turnstile is? And then point five out, are we working back? When where, so we've gotten a letter saying you're starting, but I I don't actually know where that exactly is on a map.
So right now, let's just say that we're gonna be starting work south of IR three.
So and no actual pin? We don't have a a number?
I, no, it it's one point five. It's it, that's just a south of IR. That is the current starting point. Um, that is a request of uh the partners to start at that point uh due to uh to some other conditions. That arose before um the most recent discussions. Um, so we'll be starting south of IR three.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Counsel, Counsel Bailey.
Oh, I don't have one right now, but I think.
Counsel McCabe.
There's been a lot of, thank you through the chair.
Yeah.
And and thank you for coming today. Appreciate that. Roads probably weren't the greatest. A lot of stuff on social media about parking and access. Could you speak to both those, please?
We've always recognized um particularly in the Narrows portion, adjacent to the Brooklyn Bridge, it's tight in there. That was always going to be an issue. There's always been the plans and developments. That was always gonna be an issue, there's always been the plans to develop a parking plan. We're looking at alternatives right now, our focus is on making the trail safe. On ensuring that we don't lose any more due to erosion, that the rocks don't fall in it from the cliffs above. Those are our focuses right now, we recognize that we need to have an effective trailhead at both ends of the trail and at a point in between, to be perfectly honest, Grand Lot, something like that. Where people can get in and out of the trail, that's always been in the plans, we recognize that that might be a little bit of a moving target right now. Ultimately, there always has been discussions, it's always been an item of, of interest. That having a secondary pedestrian bike crossing over into this Sycamore's downtown core is ultimately the best solution for all. It's not, it's not part of the current plan, but I can, I can attest, I can assure that that's always been part of the future vision. Because that does make the most sense.
I'm, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for your comments. So a few years back, or I don't know how many years, the council passed a resolution that the, the rail trail starts or begins on the east side of the channel at the Anna Main Street. The council at that point took that resolution to CSRD and the CSRD endorsed that resolution. So, and, and also Splatton, Splatton supports are crossing across the channel to the east side of Main Street. So, I mean, yes, that's the long-term goal and it's, and it's a resolution of council that it starts on this side of the channel at the end of Main Street. And supported and endorsed by the CSRD, that resolution was brought to the CSRD and they supported it, so, but that's a long-range plan, so. That could be three to five years or who knows, right? I mean, we can't afford it as a small community, so it'll require some grant funding. But on the interim. I, I guess, my question goes back to the access and parking. How are you planning on phasing that in, like the, the trail needs, they call it a gravel, make sure, you know, some more surface on it to make it usable. You have a contractor in place right now to do that, you have funding in place right now to do that. And apparently the news release and today's papers that you are going ahead and doing that. But just, I guess, south of I R number three now. How are you going to ensure that once that's constructed, the trail itself? Are you gonna keep it closed to the public until you address the access and parking issues? Or how, how is your plan to face the, the construction of the trail in conjunction with safe access and parking to the trail?
We were in a, a number of different discussions regarding trailhead development. I don't, there's nothing blocking people using the trail now. Like there's no barricades or anything like that in place. So I don't, I don't believe that it's the ownership group's intention to, to block out a pending parking lot or some kind of trailhead that's being developed at the northern end of the trail. That is clearly in the plans, we're having discussions about that. Again, primary focus is, you're absolutely correct, is to maintain and protect the trail as it exists now. Ensure we don't lose any more, make it safe, as safe as we possibly can. We are having a number of conversations regarding that, that trailhead development and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Counselor Bailey?
Yeah, thanks very much for being here, I appreciate it and I know I have a lot of questions, but I guess one of them that's always come to my mind is the plan's always been to have this rail connected into the new Broome Bridge somehow with that multi-use trail. And, and I know, like, the, one of the big issues that came about was moving it from kilometers zero to point five, where we would start the construction, that was what was proposed. How, and I'm just wondering, if you can't answer this question because it's, you know, those conversations haven't happened, that's totally fine. But if it starts at point five, how do we get that to the Broome Bridge? Or is this just a larger discussion we're gonna all have to have?
It's gonna be a larger discussion.
Yeah, okay. And, and I guess just a follow-up, you know, and I think that's something we can really work on together. I mean, we're obviously very vested in that. I think it's also extremely critical for the long-term success of the rail trail to have that connectivity, even if we get the pedestrian bridge. I mean, the pedestrian bridge is, in my mind, a very big question mark because, you know, if we have the connectivity over the Broome Bridge, then us going out to get grants and make the, make the political case for that does become a little weaker. And certainly with the demand for government resources, those things start being looked at through that lens. But I guess, in terms of a commitment I'm looking for is that we work on that together with the M O T I to try to get some of those questions around the connectivity of the Broome Bridge answered sooner rather than later. I'm just wondering if that's something we can work on together with the rail trail.
Unless something has changed that I'm not aware of. We're not in a position to have a whole lot of discussions about what happens in the District of Sycamore's. I'm not in the position as a local government administrator to actively work in contrary to a bylaw of a jurisdiction that I don't prefer. So right now, as I understand it, the law in the District of Sycamore's is that rail trail is not a permitted use on that land, unless I'm mistaken. So given that, I'm not in a position to actively work on something that would be contrary to the bylaws of Sycamore's. I, as a local government leader, expect people to honor and obey the bylaws that my force puts in place in our jurisdiction and I would be recommending to my board this thing.
So a quick follow-up?
Can you quick follow up?
Yeah, no, and that's totally fine from your point of view, my point of view is obviously the opposite to that. Is that that is one of the really big pieces that is a huge question mark that we don't have an answer to anymore. And so I guess this is a, yeah, I guess we're gonna have to disagree on that one. But certainly my, my view is that we do continue to work with M O T I as council to figure out that piece. It's a very large piece, it's something that I know the plans have changed originally from where they originally were at. And it'll be something that we'll have to, to dig into and I'm sure it'll be something you can do separately as well. And maybe at some point we're gonna have a meeting of the minds on that.
Thanks. Counselor Bailey, Counselor Rich?
I'm through the chair. Two questions, so I'm a little bit confused, you're saying that the trail's not closed, but there's a sign that says the, the trail is closed. So are, are we allowed on it or we're not allowed on it?
Well, we're, we're trying, we're gonna repair it, we're gonna make it safe. We did the rock scaling last year, it's gonna be under construction this year, so it won't be a whole lot of people on it. But we're not out there patrolling it as, as we go along, it's, it's, we don't have cops on it or anything like that. It's gonna be a construction scene for some time this year, so it won't be available in that regard. There are sections that are done, the end of the B S section is done. So as that, as we continue our development and as construction takes place, more and more will be usable to, to the public. Right now, this section, this part closer to town here, will be under construction this year.
And, sorry, through the chair. The other next question I have is it, like, we've, we're working with the community, we're trying to come up with a way to get people to the trail. Because the, the pedestrian bridge is gonna be, it's, it's not a tomorrow thing. Would the CSRD be in support of, of, of a barge? Would they back Sycamore's, would they, is that something you guys have looked at and, and said, hey, here's some funding for this? Is this something you guys have looked at, considered it? Because we really are looking for a solution.
We haven't had any formal discussions. I, as far as I know, we haven't been asked.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Chair Flynn.
To reply to that, I've been involved since the first discussions on the rail trail and I've never heard of a thought to have a barge to get people to the rail trail. So I, I do want to speak to that, that's the first I've ever heard.
Okay.
All my time involved. Second thing I want to speak to is it's really important to remember that it is a tripartite, tripartite ownership of the rail trail. I've been asked numerous times by media, by other people to provide my thoughts as Chair of the CSRD. I am not gonna speak on behalf of two other organizations that share ownership. So as Chair of the CSRD, as a counselor in the City of Salmonarm who contribute thirty-five percent towards the CSRD purchase price, even though we're not connected, because we were implored to do so by Sycamore's Council of the Day and Mayor of the Day and did so happen. I can't speak for anybody except the City of Salmonarm Council and say that we want the contiguous trail from, originally it was Broome Bridge to Armstrong. And we have thirteen million dollars waiting to be given to us by the federal government, even the flat scene, to manage with the ownership group to construct. Federal grants are not easy to get. And when I start hearing that people think that the building of the trail is in, isn't proper and the, the design and all these issues. We got thirteen million dollars from the feds. Clearly somebody, no, I'm not saying I have full trust in that, based on a ride cam, talking about the apps. But the fact is, the ownership group wants to get going. We are not going to start where we don't have the proper zoning. And the original design was from the Broome Bridge. If that has changed for reasons that everybody knows, that wasn't necessarily our choice. We do have an alternate trailhead that we are going to plan to start building from and then people can have access. The fact is, I'm an insurance guy in my real life, we can't help people, you can use the rail trail. There's a liability issue, it is going to be an active construction zone. But I can guarantee you that the ownership group wants to get people on that trail as fast as we can, as quick as we can. And that's why we're planning to start where we're planning to start. So long-term, Counselor Bailey? I, personally, I think if we can find funding to get it across downtown Sycamore's, that's better for everybody. I also would agree with your thoughts that if we have an alternative pedestrian route, that might minimize the chance to get that. But I certainly wouldn't discount that option, maybe being better than sending the money to get to Broome Bridge, I don't know. I want to have those discussions and the ownership group wants to have those discussions. And you say we need to work together, but I don't feel like we're working together, that's what I'm gonna say, it's Chair of the region this, so. Without getting too emotional or upset. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Evans?
Oh, I was, thank you through the chair, I was just gonna comment that the barge idea is less than two weeks old because I heard of it was a letter from, from someone in, in town that came up with that neat idea.
And I'd like to, and I did a couple of weeks, well, I think I've mentioned it, I've actually mentioned it in this room a few times and I'm not calling it a barge. I was simply saying that a ferry across, I mean, you go to Vancouver, there's these little ferries, it's part of the experience. You find parking space here, yeah, hop on your ferry and it takes you to the rail trail that is connected to Sycamore's or as close to Sycamore's as possible, unfortunately. It is not zoned for that, hasn't been rezoned. But I do have, I do have a question for you, John, because as Mayor of Sycamore's and Council, I am getting many emails from the West Side owners and their concerns are, well, they were permits, so I'm certain that they're speaking to you about that because I have no jurisdiction, we, we have no jurisdiction, D O S over those agreements, so I'm hoping that they're speaking to you on that. But right now, with that group, their main concern is the safety and how it's going to connect. And yes, understand that it's not going to be at zero any longer, it's gonna be at point five if the zoning were, were changed. So, but I guess my point is to you and maybe you could share or have a public meeting or open house with the West Side owners, just a suggestion. Cause their concern is the rail trail, the safety of the rail trail. And I understand Sycamore's is not building that as well, like it's, that's not part of our mandate. It's part of the Trail Alliance, it's part of the Development Corp, it's part of CSRD Nord, it's not the first part of the trail that's been built, I'm fairly certain it would be built to safety standards. But they are not feeling comfortable with that. So I guess that needs to be addressed for a conversation with them, I mean, I'm quite confident in the ability to build the rail trail here and the group that's doing it. But it's the group on the West Side that's having some concerns about safety issues, so.
Safety to who?
Yeah. Safety to users, to Sycamore'sians?
I can assure you, I've been local government administrator for many, many years and risk management is hard, very hard into us. I can assure you that we are doing nothing but having concern for the safety of the people that might be using our property. We would be belated if we did anything else. I have to say in all honesty, for those folks that I have spoken to from the Narrows, those property owners, and it is not many. That has never been raised in any of the conversations that I've had. I can assure you that the information that we had that addresses the concerns that were presented to, or through their complaint with the office person that was shared with me. The conversations that we've had, that conversations boards had, all of those issues have been addressed. I, in my conversations to date, safety has not been one that's come across my desk or in my conversations. I can't speak to all the conversations you've had with my son. But I am fairly confident that not a lot of those conversations have been taking place. So I can assure you that the rail trail will be built to high safety standards. That we have nothing but the potential customers on our property. That we have a responsibility to ensure their safety. So I, I believe that the safety concerns of the users of our trail are effectively being managed by the Governance Advisor Committee and the Technical Operating Committee of the trail.
John, just one more follow-up question. How many of those twenty-two folks have, have reached out and talked to you, like have called you and had a conversation with you? Pardon? Thank you, Counselor Beach.
Through the chair, John, Kevin, thank you for coming. From my perspective, safe access and parking are, are critical. And I think that when people are talking to us, property owners are reaching out to us, they are talking about safe access. Not necessarily just the safety of the trail in front of their place, but safe access. My perspective, and it is my perspective, now being on the trail out as far as Poliard Point where I can look down at a big bite out of the trail of erosion. Is that it, it does make more sense to me. It, that you would have started at the other end and got the erosion taken care of before we built the start, the head of the trail. Because knowing people, if you build something, they will come, whether you want them to or not. And I would prefer to know that the rest of the trail has been shored up and repaired, that there aren't twelve areas of erosion that people can sort of start out on quite safely in our jurisdiction and then decide, well, hey, let's do the whole trail. And though it's not ready, so I kind of feel like, you know, this issue of starting on our end when we don't know when the Broome Bridge is gonna be fully complete and how the Broome Bridge's design is, is technically planning to connect into Old Spaum Sheen Road. It actually makes more sense to me to start farther and farther away from from our spot and and it's safer, in my opinion. And having been out there and looked at it and walked it several times and also seen the type of erosion that you're gonna be dealing with along the lake.
Thank you, I appreciate this.
Sorry, uh councillor Bailey, then councillor Rich.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna say thanks again, and I appreciate, you know, Kevin's comments as well. I think that's a mutual feeling at this point, but that doesn't mean that that can't change and that can't move forward, right? Whenever we're in a conflict, we need to find avenues in which we agree. And I think what we do agree is that the rail trail can be an important part of this community and every other community, and that takes getting people aligned around it. Right now, that's not the case, doesn't mean that stays the same. And so I appreciate you being here today. And, you know, my my goal and my commitment is to go forward on issues that we agree on and we try to knock off some of the concerns that we do have. They're real concerns, they were brought up, I don't need to do that all again and uh now, but there isn't the, there isn't a desire in this room or or with me to not see this rail trail proceed, but it needs to proceed and with with certain issues dealt with. And I uh and I get that we're gonna disagree with that on that right now, but I just wanted to say thank you for coming and and taking the time.
Councillor Rich. Through the chair, um, yeah, I thank you again and and thank you, Kevin, for coming. Um, and I think everyone at this table around here, uh, we we have all stated that we are all for the rail trail and I think Sicamous overall is absolutely in support for this and we can see what that does for our community. Um, we've got questions and um I think we deserve answers and and then we can hopefully come to a consensus where then we can all move forward together. And I think that's where we stand right now is um we just need to figure out where we go from now. Here we are today, so what do we do to get this going forward? Um, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna um address the safety concern. Um, I'm not gonna say that safety concern is is a West Side owners. Uh, I have walked um spent several times walking. The safety concern is actually not the trail, I think after they get it all shored up and figured out and I believe the contractors absolutely know what they're going to do and that 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 uh trail will be very safe. I I feel like there are many, many people within this community that are concerned on access, on how we get across to start the trail, where people park, how that little narrow road works and all of those things. And again, it it's not insurmountable, it just is, we need parking, we need to know where the turnoff is. How is the bridge gonna work? If if we're walking across a bridge right now, how's that going to work? And we don't have those answers right now and we're hoping that we can work together. Um, this is huge for our community and we absolutely need it, so we really hope that we are working together for those answers. And sorry, and Siobhan, you said you had other questions, like you tell our questions are answered?
Oh, that's, yeah, I'm good.
No, you've got them? Okay. Anyone else? Chair Flynn, go ahead.
Some of the things I'm hearing, first of all, I'm starting the session we're supposed to have later and what can be talked about here due to crossing permits and all that, so I thought we were having an in-camera to discuss some of this.
Hmm, we're gonna move into it, we just.
That line is very difficult.
Yeah, and we are moving into in-camera after, we just wanted to make sure that um we had some conversation in cow, uh, we've got twenty-two folks online and I just, I just wanna, I wanna encourage them.
So I'm just gonna try to respond to that quickly. CSRD has had virtually zero involvement except to support the District of Sicamous in getting the Brun Bridge project going. So from a safety point of view, the Brun Brun Bridge issues are there. Throwing some more traffic on them will compound them. We all know that. Do I feel that if we have a hundred and fifty people go to a new trailhead overnight, that's much different, it's many more people and it's an issue, but we're not gonna get the Brun Bridge built. We want to start getting on the trail and the safety on the trail can't start happening till that bigger grant is done. And some of this has been held up due to election issues at Slatsey, one of the barges. They are now moving forward, so do I hope we build the trail and get people accessing it before Brun Bridge is done? I do. I really do, because I don't wanna wait till Brun Bridge is done. Do I think it could cause some safety issues? I can't argue against that. Of people crossing that intersection that's been terrible for twenty-seven years, I haven't been shook up. So are we gonna fix that as regional district? No, and we haven't involved been involved in the design or the archaeological studies or anything else. We've been trying to support Sicamous and Sicamous Council when it comes to our table. So I don't question that there's concerns about access to anything over there. There's a new uh development with, I don't know how many trailers, a hundred new residents. If we add some rail trail users to that, there's no question, the safety changes. But I don't see that being the CSRD's job or the rail trail owner's job to do the Brun Bridge. That's that's all I'm trying to get at. And and I do wanna remind people, we have thirteen million dollars that has been sitting there for over a year and a half waiting for just some finalization on accepting that grant. So that our taxpayers directly aren't paying for it, it's federal government grants, so. Um, I want this to go, I can't wait for our discussion later on some of the more legal stuff, but I'm struggling with that line.
Thank you, Chair. Go ahead, councillor Rich. It's sorry, Kevin, I'm gonna make you walk back up. Um, do you, do you know, um, yeah, right, do you have your fit on? Mine's like beep beep. Um, do you know if there is a a an end date on that grant? Has anybody reached out? Do we know that that's good for a year or two years? Eh has anybody reached out from the federal government's flat scene or anything like that to tell us that grant is going to expire?
All I will say is that that was one of the concerns I had all along with all the political turmoil at Slatsey. We've been told there isn't, but just so you know, their finalization with the feds is imminent. Okay, when I say imminent, they're working on one or two clauses still and they they said that's that they're close, so don't worry about that. Let, they're working on that as one of the trail owners who are going to be responsible for the grant, federal government.
So at this time, just to reiterate, is is we have not been given a deadline that that grant will be pulled.
It's not our grant.
It's not our grant.
Yes.
Okay, and we don't have a, we don't have a deadline on that.
Uh, we do have, Derek, if you wanna speak, there is more than one grant. That's how excited senior levels of government are about this project, that's why we have to get it going, so go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank you through the chair. Um, we do have deadlines on two grants uh for two portions of the trail, the Sicamous to Mara portion and the uh lands down to Armstrong portion. Uh, those uh deadlines are uh fairly hard of September of twenty twenty-four. Uh, those are user lose it.
And are they starting at point zero five out of Sicamous, they're starting at zero or three point five?
The one point five where we're gonna start that work, uh, given the decision on rezon.
So those grants are still usable?
Those grants are being used for those sections.
So those grants are saved then?
Well, if we can get it done by uh September, yeah.
Thanks.
What's what's the value, sorry, of the grant?
Sorry, you've caught me unaware.
Um, yeah, go ahead.
What what are the value of those two grants?
Yeah, through the chair, I'm I'm sorry, I would have to get back to you on that, I I don't have them right in front of me.
All part?
One point five.
Okay, so yeah, councillor Bailey.
I just wonder if we should go into our.
Yeah, we will, we have, I'm just gonna let uh uh Director Martin speak and then we've got uh public input for fifteen minutes.
Sorry, great, yes.
So we do have the public that can ask questions of Director Martin, who is part of this, as well as our C E O, so go ahead, Director Martin.
I just wanted to comment that there's been a lot of focus on safety and for the people that live on the other side of the channel, it is a safe thing because they're not driving over here to access trails over here, they're walking along them. Yeah, you know, I I know everybody's excited about this, I have people coming to see me all the time about it and they can't wait for it to get going. Um, I just hope that we're able to move things along, I know that uh that um the partnership is ready to roll. I think that um Spatine, once he've uh signed the document, will be jumping for joy just like the rest of us and I just think that this is something that we all need to celebrate, this is gonna be a legacy project that we will hold.
Thank you, Director Martin. Okay, council. Okay, thank you, uh, we are going to go into uh public input period and we're allowing fifteen minutes for this. So if you're in the gallery and you wanna speak to or ask questions, please put up your hand. If you are online, please put up your electronic hand. State your name, please, you can sit, just go up to the mic or the podium.
My name is Lisa Farrow. I've lived here for thirty-one years in Sicamous, I live on Och Road. I'm in upland uphill, my property is not along the lake, it's up on the other side of the street. Just a few points that I've noticed, um, John from the CSRD, he spoke and he said that if I understand it correctly, he said he can't speak to you until you change the zoning. So we're not gonna get anywhere in Sicamous on this until the zoning is changed. If the zoning is not changed, then Sicamous cannot be part of the trail and it's the money from Sicamous to Mara is only available to September and it may be one point five million dollars. Then the point five to the one point five kilometer of trail in front of twenty to twenty-five homes, Sicamous is not going to benefit from that money that is presently available. If there are twenty to twenty-five homeowners who are stalling this for the rest of our community, the rest of British Columbia and the rest of the world, this does not make logical sense to me. I have walked on rail trails all throughout the Okanagan, Coldstream, Oyama, I rode bikes, Myra Canyon in Colona, I've ridden a bike, Oliver, I've walked. Why doesn't Sicamous want to be part of this and we can't be part until we speak to the CSRD? My neighbors on the lakeside, they have their points, but why should twenty-five homeowners prevent the rest of us from enjoying a full experience in our community? And earlier today, somebody used the term destination experience. This is a destination experience and if you, council and mayor cannot speak to CSRD until you change your zoning, we are going to miss this opportunity. And if all these other communities, Enderby, Mara, Armstrong, Colona, Oliver, Oyama, if they're all part of it and for some strange reason Sicamous is not, I would also think that the idea of putting a cycling or walking access across where the old bridge had been, that is the most fabulous idea ever. Sicamous, our neighborhood is hmm not tied into Sicamous as clearly as it could be and that would be a fabulous way of tying that part of our community to this part of our community. I I cannot see what the difficulty is here when if Enderby can do this, Coldstream can do it, but Sicamous cannot find a reason for being part of something that is all throughout British Columbia and is free. You don't need a boat, but when you walk along this, you can see beautiful Mara Lake, you can see Rosemont Lakes, you can walk along the channel. I am flattered that the zoning won't be changed so we can talk to the CSRD.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Delicious.
Anyone else wanna speak to this? State your name, please, Gwyneth.
Gwyneth Gal, um, I wasn't going to speak, but I just want to say that I have been a part of the Trail Alliance um in its early days and over, I don't know how many years, I'm guessing fifteen years, people have been talking about the rail trail and the benefit to Sicamous. And I personally was quite appalled that the motion for rezoning only was denied at our last council meeting. We have talked and talked about the rail trail in Sicamous and it has to move forward. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Thanks, Gwyneth. Go ahead, Rob.
I wasn't going to speak either, my name's Rob Haberman. I've been following this uh this story pretty close, been a homeowner here for about twenty years. I own real estate in Colona on the rail trail. We are developing in Lake Country on the rail trail. It's a cornerstone to all these communities and in the process of development, it is easier to kick a rolling ball and when council is done with the uh the vote to not change the land use, takes all of play. Momentum is so hard to get back. Kids really need to reconsider that, the consequences pausing this. I liked someone else's analogy uh on the fourteenth. Keep it in first gear and there's always, there's always some things to work out, but pausing it is is really stopping it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Anyone else wanna speak in the gallery? Anyone online? Any hands up online?
I'm seeing. No, no.
Okay, anyone in the gallery? Okay, then we will uh adjourn recommendation that many of the whole meeting for February twenty-eighth twenty twenty-four be adjourned at uh three twenty-eight.